I'm there. South, south.
The guy dog.
Yeah, it's been sitting pretty long. Now we got two. Everybody ready?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Guyman City Council meeting of November 12th, 2024. This time, I'd like to call Margaret Minden Hall, the pastor of the Victory Center Church, to give our invocation. You can pull it down anywhere you need. If you want to hold it, you can do that.
Hold it? Okay. Okay, that works. Okay. Father, we come into your presence this evening, thanking you, Father, for your presence in government. And, Father, your word says to pray for those that are in authority. And we're so thankful for these men and women that have given their time and their effort to take the leadership of this city. Lord, we appreciate what they have done, and we appreciate the fact that you have wisdom for them, and we ask you to give them wisdom in every decision that they make. We ask you, Lord, to give them an anointing to do their job. And, Father, we pray for the city of Guyman. We pray, Lord, that your blessing will rest upon this city, that we will be a hub in this part of the country where righteousness will prevail, and, Lord, that we will see your will done in this area. And so, Father, we just thank you for this meeting. We believe, Lord, that your will will be done and wisdom will be obtained in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Ms. Sanchez, would you do this in the clear?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I'll call this meeting to order. Agenda item number two is the tennis roll call and determination of a quorum.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Alvedras?
President.
Mr. Sessler?
President.
Ms. Sanchez?
Here.
Mr. Idson?
Here.
Ms. Hoffman? Mr. Petty?
Here.
Mr. Shannon?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Agenda item number three is approval of the consent agenda. It's a rather lengthy one. I think if I have any questions before we approve it. If not, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the consent agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Abstain.
Sessler?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have four ayes on one of the statements.
Okay. Agenda item number four. Is public comments. Does anybody have any public comments tonight? Any public comments? Okay, hearing nine. Agenda item number five is discussion and possible action to adopt a public commune of policy for the city of Guyman public meetings. Now I'll turn this over to you, Mr. Shannon.
Thank you, Mayor. There before you, and I think up on the screen, you know, life just goes better if you have a set of rules. And we basically drafted, staff and I drafted this from the Oklahoma Municipal League playbook. I feel like, you know, we've had some meetings every once in a while that didn't quite get out of hand, but there are some certain rules and regulations you have to abide by through Oklahoma state statutes. And this is basically just a set of simple rules that could make our meetings go good and still abide by the Open Meetings Act. There's two parts to that. I think this is just kind of the playbook there, but there's also a request form she's fixing to bring up. If a citizen wants to come to a meeting and voice their opinion on an agenda item, we're going to have them go ahead and fill this little short form out, basically the date, who you are, where you live, reside at, your phone number. And if you're speaking, if you're going to represent a group, tell me what group that is. If it's just for yourself, put yourself there. But if it's for like an agenda item like tonight, if somebody wanted to get up and voice a concern or just make a comment on agenda number five, they can, but there's a set of rules where you just, the mayor would have to address the mayor. And it's just protocol how we do our public meetings, so. Here it's in writing.
I think part of it is we would like you to, a lot of times, we have the application earlier, the form filed early, staff may be able to answer your question.
Well, you're right, Mayor, and I'll just go ahead and make a comment. A lot of times when, and these meetings are open to a point, but if you really want an answer to some of your questions or the public, come to City Hall, make an appointment with myself, my assistants, or any of my staff, the police chief, or whoever, if you've got questions, that's where your questions should be answered. Addressing the council, their hands are tied by the Open Meetings Act, but in my office, it's all, it's fair game. We learned a lot from the public when they do come in and ask some questions, but the council are basically have their hands tied when you come up and address the council and want a direct answer. It's a lot of rules and regulations, but I encourage the public to just make an appointment or just drop by City Hall during working hours. And if you can't do that, give me a call after hours, and we'll sit and talk and hopefully resolve any of your questions or comments. And staff's willing to meet day or night.
Any discussion, any questions?
I'll make a motion we adopt a public comic policy for the city of Guyman public meetings, item five.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We have five ayes.
Agenda item number six is the monthly report from Main Street.
You can email your council, Mr. Shannon. I sent you all my quarterly reports. I didn't send my director's report to you this last time because I visited with Kim, who is our chair, and the way council falls, our board falls, every two weeks has been a board director's report, and so it's kind of, I don't want to say a waste of time, but a little bit of a waste of my time. So each month, you'll get the quarterly report or the director's report from the month before of what we actually did. With that said, do you have any questions with the quarterly report? We do have Small Business Saturday coming up. We're going to be, and I'll be looking for you, because we're going to be giving $500 in Main Street bucks away and ended to get you a stamp for this year, because you're going to have to sign all those receipt, all those little entry tickets. We will be giving a chance to anybody that just comes in the Main Street office, and then if you spend money during the week of Thanksgiving at any of the Main Street stores, you can get one ticket for every $10 you spend in the drawing. And if you shop Small Business Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. and bring your receipt, you'll get two tickets for every $10 you spend. And we're going to give $500 in main bucks to one lucky winner. We did that last year. It was very successful. The weather was not very good, but we had a great turnout and gave away $500 to one person who was pretty excited to get. And so that's what we have coming up. Also, we are a part of the Christmas Open House that's held on Friday, December the 7th, which will be late month shopping, and the Main Street Shop &amp; Dine will be a part of that as well. And also, we are part of Home for the Holidays, and on Easter, the first, from 5:00, around 5:30 or 6:00 o'clock, we would like to ask you all to join us at the park as we light up Home for the Holidays. And also, now like Kim, we have our Main Street pageant, and we brought one of the queens with us this evening.
Last time I saw you guys in October, we were just getting ready for this event to happen, and so we were fortunate to crown five of the title holders, one of which is here with us tonight, but I do want to tell you that the others that are missing, you should probably see them around the community with the sparkle we have and the sash on, but Stella Higge was crowned Little Miss of Main Street. Lily Higge was crowned Young Miss of Main Street. Brittany Carrasco was crowned Miss Teen of Main Street. Jaslyn Romero is the Miss of Main Street, and she actually resides in Woodward, so we're excited for some collaborations with Woodward Main Street with that. And then here to introduce herself to you is our Miss of Main Street, Katie Lindsay.
Hello. I know several of you. I've worked for the couple of you. My name is Katie Lindsay, born and raised in Guyman, graduated high school from here, half Mueller, half Lindsay. Super excited to represent Guyman. I always have enjoyed telling people how proud I am to come from the Panhandle, so super excited to do this for a year and hopefully get some more involvement in it for next year as well.
Congratulations.
Yes.
And thank you again for the city, for your support. We're looking forward to hosting our third annual Main Street Pageant next October 2025. And so we're excited to see the things that our title holders get to do with the rain and be more active in the communities.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Agenda item number seven is the monthly report from the Guyman Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening, council members. Mayor, you received my director's report and the newsletter for November. Do you have any questions regarding any of those items? No? Okay. Halloween Palooza was a great success. We appreciate your all's support with that event with helping provide transportation and letting us use the park. We served over 1,200 kiddos, and I don't know how many adults tagged along, so it was a beautiful evening to be out at the park, so we all had a wonderful time with that. Ronnie gave you information about the next two big events coming up, Home for the Holidays and Holiday Open House, so we'll be looking forward to having you guys out and about for those events as well. I believe that's all. If you all don't have any questions for me?
Keep up the good work.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, can I say something real quick? Both Main Street and the Chamber of Commerce met with us last week during our budget hearings, and I appreciate you all taking your times out and your great ideas that both organizations brought to the table, so I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Agenda item number eight is discussion and possible action to approve ordinance 890 and ordinance amending the zoning ordinances and zoning map, lots three and four of block 59 of the Barrett Douglas Edition and a south 40 feet of the vacated Fourth Street lying north of Lot Four, Block 59, Barrett Douglas Edition, also known as 405 South Quinn of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, of the city, of the code of ordinances of the City of Guyman, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency if the ordinance is attached. So this... Would you like? There we go.
So August 28th, August 29th, Highway Nicholas submitted an application, and October 1st, we did have the planning and zoning meeting. He wanted to rezone his property from an I-1 to an R-3. In the planning and zoning meeting, it did get recommended by the board. So there were no protest letters against it. You guys have any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance 890 and ordinance amending the zone ordinances and zoning map, lots three and four, block 59, Barrett Douglas Edition, and south 40 feet of vacant Fourth Street lying north of Lot Four, Block 45, Barrett Douglas Edition, AKA 405 South Quinn of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, on the, of the code of ordinances of the City of Guyman, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict here within, and declaring an emergency. We'll have to do that separately. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
I'll make a motion we declare that an emergency?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number nine is discussion and possible action to approve ordinance 896 and ordinance amending the zoning ordinances and zoning map, lots 11 and 12 of block 36 of the original town of now City of Guyman, also known as 301 North James Street of the City of Guyman, Oklahoma, of the code of ordinances of the City of Guyman, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency. Yes, ma'am?
So August 28th, Ray Muto and Yungus Ibarra did turn in application to rezone their property from an R-1 to an R-2, which is single-family residential to general residential. It's been, so there's been two properties, or there's been two houses on one property, but it has never been rezoned or anything, even made for, maybe that. So they wanted to go ahead and make these arrangements, they wanted to do an addition on one of the buildings. We wanted to check the zoning, and we noticed that it's owned as single-family residential and a general residential, so they submitted an application so they can meet our requirements. And we did have the planning and zoning meeting on October 1st, and the planning and zoning board recommended it. And there were 32 letters sent out and zero protest letters.
Thank you. Any questions?
Make a motion to approve ordinance 896 and ordinance amending zone ordinances and zoning map, lots 11 and 12, block 36, original town now City of Guyman, AKA 301 North James Street of the City of Guyman, of the quarter, code of ordinances of the City of Guyman, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Make a motion declaring that an emergency?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Thank you.
Agenda item number 10 is discussion and possible action to approve ordinance number 897, an ordinance amending section 22-25 of the code of ordinances of the City of Guyman, preventing smoking or vaping in public places, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and declaring an emergency. Background, Mr. Shannon?
A little bit background, this is an existing ordinance, but it needed the, just as you stated, the sentence providing for severability and repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and with doing that, adding to the existing ordinance, I think it end up for about $90,000, $92,000 worth of grant money if we would just put that in there, so I think that would be a due pass.
I'm saying, I've been with T-Site, and they want to give us some money with it.
Yes, they do.
As part of it.
Yep, since we passed that ordinance.
Okay. Any questions, discussion?
How enforceable is that? Ordinance?
It's like any other ordinance, kind of like running the stop sign. If you get caught, and you'll have to go to municipal court, so.
There's a list of fines?
There is a fines.
Any other discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 897 and ordinance amending section 22 through 25 of the code of ordinances of the City of Guyman, preventing smoking or vaping in public places, providing for severability, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Make a motion declaring that an emergency?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 11 is discussion and possible action to approve invoice number 004608 in the amount of $59,326.50 to Stoltz Telecom for 700 megahertz radios for the police department. Any questions? Anybody got any questions for the chief, since he's here?
Sounds like they're working.
Very well.
Any discussion?
I'll make a motion we approve invoice number 004608 in the amount of $59,326.50 cents, Stoltz Telecom for 700 megahertz radios for the police department. Aye, do we have? Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sessler?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 12 is discussion and possible action to approve invoice number 8441 in the amount of $550,000, $550,000.68, I can't say that, to Tonya for a Cummins 380 horsepower Spartan fire engine for the Guyman Fire Department. Any discussion, questions?
I'll make a couple of comments on this. I'll make, this fire truck had been ordered for the last two and a half, close to three years. It kind of got caught in the world of COVID parts and stuff like that. A lot of things had to happen. Tried to do a municipal budget, keep this budgeted in there for the last couple, three years, because you know, you've already made the commitment, so there had to be a lot of hoops and stuff just on the financial background of that, but the wait itself, I think it was right at two years. I don't see anybody from the fire department here, but it was a little over two and a half years on order, and we finally got it. We should be able to have it manned and time we get all the equipped out, radios put in, and it should be in service in the next couple of weeks, I understand.
Good.
Where's its home going to be? Station one or what?
Station one.
Station one.
Any questions, discussion?
I'll make a motion we approve invoice number 8441 in the amount of $550,068 to Toyn for the Cummins 380 HP Spartan fire engine for the Guyman Fire Department, item 12. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sessler?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 13 is discussion and possible action to approve contract for sale in exchange of real estate between the Independent School District Number Eight and the City of Guyman for the YMCA property. And I'll let you enlighten us on that, Mr. Shannon.
Certainly. A little history behind the YMCA property. There should be, there shouldn't been a survey and a plot along that, but the YMCA was turned back to the city probably about a year and a half, two years ago, and it's been vacant, and the school showed a little bit of interest in it way early on. Basically, they have a piece of property over on Highway 54 and Crumley, I believe, I think Dixie. Yeah. Hi, Dixie, welcome. And we've, we'd like to just do a land exchange, get the YMCA back in circulation, it's a big building, has a lot of benefit for the school district. School district could utilize it in so many different ways, I'm sure. The piece of property is just a trade off with that piece of property and the property over there on Crumley and 54. I believe the school board approved it last night unanimously? No, but it was approved by majority vote. Okay. I knew if I said that, I'd have been wrong. But, yeah.
Any, I have one question, and I know that they probably got held up with the, with the rain. They still have a little bit of demolition work to do.
Yeah, I think there's just a little bit more demolition probably, and fill in, and it'll be ready for the exchange, correct? Yeah.
Any questions, comments?
This is just where the building sits. I know we talked about it. It's not the park.
That is correct. Yeah. The city had done a survey and a site plan, and I thought it was attached there too, but it's just the building proper in the parking lot.
Both the side and the front parking lot? The side and the, and the front parking lot?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve contract of sale in exchange of real estate between the Independent School District Number Eight and the City of Guyman for the YMCA property.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Idson?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 14 is discussion and possible action to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Guyman and Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 125, for the calendar year 2025. Mr. Shannon?
This is a rollover contract that was negotiated a year ago. The Fraternal Order of Police thought it was good enough for the year 2025, so there wouldn't really be any negotiations or anything like that, but our working relationship from administration to the police department is solid, and this, this, this and here made me feel good. So nothing changed from last year. And they've, they've accepted it, and so have staff, so.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Guyman and the Fraternal Order of Police, Lodge Number 125, for the calendar year 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Sessler?
Aye.
Alvedras?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 15 is discussion and possible action to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Guyman and the Professional Firefighters of Guyman, Local 4256, of the International Association of Firefighters, for the calendar year 2025. Mr. Shannon?
This one wasn't as simple as... This one wasn't as simple as the police department, but it was in good faith. The fire department came to us, they, we basically included the matrix, pay matrix, like we'd done the police department a year ago, into the, into their union. And I think we changed some wording around, so it was, our negotiations wasn't negotiations, it was just intelligent adults sitting around the table agreeing, and well-mannered, and it went really well. So what you have for you today is simple and ready for your approval.
Well-mannered firefighters, I find that hard to believe.
Yeah, there you go. Now, we're blessed to have two unions that, I come in contact with a lot of city managers throughout the whole state of Oklahoma, and I'll put our department and our unions up with any of them, they're kind, they're courteous, and they're direct to the point. They have their ideas, I respect that, and they also, I feel like they respect the City of Guyman in its studies, so I'll just give them a pat on the back, both organizations. We have a good communication, very good communication, so.
Question, discussion, motion?
Make a motion to approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement between the City of Guyman and the Professional Firefighters of Guyman, Local 4256, International Association of Firefighters for the calendar year 2025.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Sutter.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 16 is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number one for the ARPA fund.
I think it's just on interest revenue, wasn't it, Rhonda?
Interest revenue and also the transfer of the remaining funds from 42. We've already recognized those funds, those were the funds we received back in 2020. So we've already recognized them with the auditors, everything's been cleared. These funds are just setting in the fund. So what I wanted to do was transfer it to our general fund, because that's where most of the ARPA funds were recognized back in 21, 22, and 23. And then the interest is what we've received off of our bank accounts. And what I do is I transfer, I do a distribution of the interest for all the funds. So I stopped in October and decided to do this transfer now, so that we make sure we have the money over to our general fund, which just helps the general fund grow, makes it look better at the end of the year.
Okay.
Questions?
How's that reflect on that performatory that they just ran on the city?
It will actually, it won't have any effects on last year's, but this year's, it will help our general fund look better, because I'm moving that money over, and it just increases our income in the general fund, which is what we use all the time in areas.
Thank you.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
I make a motion that we approve budget amendment number one for the ARPA fund, item 16. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sutter.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 17 is discussion and possible action to approve budget amendment number two for the general fund. Yes, ma'am?
So what I'm doing now is I am trying to clean up our financials, recognize all revenue that we received that we actually didn't budget for, so that this one Mike and I set down for the final run. We can say, do we want to increase this, or do we want to increase it? And I just like to recognize all the revenue, so it makes the budget look much better at the end of the year. As far as the expenses, it's just recognizing the Ford Explorers in our capital outlet, and then the, that was on the police department, and then they also got a 2021 Dodge Explorer with accessories that they had been waiting on. I'm not sure how long before.
That was a replacement for a regular.
Oh, yeah, it was a replacement for a regular vehicle. So I needed to also, we didn't plan for that when we did the budget for 2024, so it's just to recognize these expenses and to say compliance with law.
Make a motion that we approve budget amendment number two for the general fund, item 17. Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Sutter.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number 18 is review and discussion of board and commission members attendance in the upcoming expired terms as of December 31st, 2024.
Council, there before you, and well, it's kind of a who attends, who doesn't attend. And we thought we'd just kind of preface this, because next month will be the board appointees. And we thought it would just be helpful for you to look, see who actually attends. I will tell you that ninety, probably ninety-eight percent of them attend, and are good volunteers, and we appreciate these volunteers. But, you know, as, as we sit here, and we catch a lot of comments that people are not showing up, yes, they are showing up. They show up when the meetings are called. Of course, life gets in the road once in a while, but there's proof that basically a majority of your people that sit on the existing boards do show up, they do participate, and they're, they're very valued people, so. And you'll also, in one of those, you'll see where the applicants, they'll be voted on next, in December, in December 10th, I believe. And, yeah, that's the ones we've got so far.
Any questions, discussion? All right. Agenda item number 19 is discussion and possible action to approve the schedule of meetings for 2025, which we have to do to meet state statutes.
Every year, we plan out the year, 2025 is going to be here in less than, before we know it. Unbelievable. Anybody?
I make a motion that we approve schedule of meetings for 2025, item 19.
I have a question before we approve. It seems like every year we move August, September, whenever we have OML. Do we have a date on that, so we don't have to move it again?
Oh, there's a date, but I couldn't tell you right off. But, but we could change it now, but we've, I'm going to ask a question. But the, our, the resolution we passed on meetings stated that, what, the second Tuesday of each month?
Yeah.
So we kind of need to stick with that. We can, we can move to not have a meeting, and either move it up or down, or whatever, and have a special meeting. Is my take on is that?
I agree.
It's what we've been doing the last few years anyway, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve the schedule of meetings for 2025. Oh, we already had a motion, didn't we?
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion, a motion and a second.
Idson.
Aye.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Sutter.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Okay. We will move to the Guyman Utilities Authority. Called this meeting the Guyman Utility Authority. Done attendance roll call, determination of a quorum. We've done approval of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez.
Aye.
Idson.
Aye.
Sutter.
Aye.
Alvedres.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Agenda item number four is public comments. Members of the public may speak at this time, regarding items on the agenda only, and limited to three minutes per person. Anybody have any public comments tonight? Any public comments? So you're hearing none? Agenda item number five is presentation by Jason Turk, Director of Energy Marketing and Client Risk Strategies with Clearwater Energy Services regarding providing natural gas to the City of Guyman. Good evening.
Good evening, thank you, everyone. My name is Jason Turk. Sorry to steal my time. This is kind of, this is kind of exciting thing for me to be a part of. I've been doing this nearly 20 years, Clearwater Energy. Our company's been doing it for over 25. We work with large industrials, municipals, so on and so forth, businesses of all types. Just in conversation with Mike and staff and people and community, there are a lot of exciting things going on, a lot of projects, all kinds of monies coming in for different things. It's an exciting time. It's a great building, by the way, it's one of the most impressive council runs. I've actually been in, and I've met a lot of them, so, a lot of good things. Mike and I started talking, I don't know, a little over a year ago, about some of the pain points for the city and natural gas bills. Pretty much for all your rate payers at the city. That's one, that's been a big need, it's been an issue, and like the water, it's been identified, it's been diagnosed, but now the question is, you know, what can you do, what do we need to do? After taking a look at this and having our people, we're headquartered in Oklahoma City, having all the different expertise there, diving into all the pieces of things that can be done, things that can't be done, there's an opportunity that, quite frankly, I don't need to try to sell it to anybody, I just need to show you the math, and it speaks for itself. So thankfully, our infrastructure is set up in a way that we can perform these things. They're fairly simple and straightforward, and see if that's something that you all want to get behind for your community. There, I will say that, and we're going to dive into the first spreadsheet, and I'm not going to be too meticulous about it, we're going to get through it in an efficient way, but this is immediate, this is immediate impact, and starting in January, it's significant, and it will be felt by everyone, everyone in this room, families, seniors, businesses, city budget holding. So I appreciate you giving me a chance to be here and take a look at it with you. I'm not exactly sure what you're seeing. Okay, well, that's, okay. You don't have hard copies or just?
We have a digital copy.
Okay, all right, great. So if we look at the Guyman savings comparison year over year, for 2024, you see the monthly volumes listed there for 24. There are also the identical ones that you have to 2023. So you've been paying the $7.49 per unit rates, and $7.27 rates for roughly two years. And if you look at the totals, the yearly totals for those two price points add up to, well, the units is a little over 306,000 units, which when you add up the price per unit, 2024, the total spend for just this 75% of your load was a little over 2,200,000. And when we're able to take that 75% of your load and plug it in for 2025, starting January, okay, we're able to drive that price down to 1,100,000, okay? Part of that is market opportunity, part of it is the expertise that we have. It's a combination of all of those things, it's kind of a perfect storm, if you will. When you look at that year over year, it's over a million dollars. That's a big number, that's one of the biggest numbers I've been a part of looking at the community. And I've had to walk into some of these council members sometimes, kind of, you know, anxious about what else going to say, or have to kind of work through some tough times together. This isn't that. This isn't that. This is, this is really a great opportunity to look into right here and in front of you. If you look at just January, I can break down just how January on the next page, broken down by units, we basically take the $7.49 price per unit and the $7.20 price per unit, and switch that to 3.78. Now, to be completely transparent, 3.78 was what, where the market was when I left, okay, today for this meeting. It can move, it moves every day, it moves every minute, okay? So I want to be frank about that. With the last weather push we just had come in, it bumped up, you know, 20 cents roughly. And that is part of the volatility of commodity natural gas. So time is part of the equation here. So as we go through this, you might think about what type of urgency that you might want to have or not have for doing something with this. So in the end, roughly $200,000 available to you for January, right? Go to the next page, it's a constellation, 2024 invoice. This was the actual invoice, you can see your totals, it come up to $532,000. Again, this is just the data that's available, that's what, that's what your invoice was. If you look at 2023 invoice, the next one, it was also $532,000. Same pricing, same volume, okay? The next page, the comparisons, additional notes. There will also be an opportunity to get even more savings in 2026, because that last 25% of roll-off of 702, so we're going to be able to capitalize on that also. And I know I'm going through a little fast, please, if you have any questions, I want to make sure everyone really feels like they understand every piece of this. So please let me know, I'd be happy to dive in if you think as we go along here. Next page, page is the flow chart, and that's basically just, there's an added step. There's going to be an added step to the process. The constellation invoice for '25 would be paid as normal, no changes. We bind the additional 75% on CIG index, and then the West Texas Gas Transport invoice will be the same. We will add one step, that invoice will come from Clearwater. If the CIG index is over the fixed price, which is 3.78 when I left, then Clearwater will pay the city down to that 3.78. So it's 10 cents over for 55,000, then Clearwater will pay the city 5,500. If the, if the index comes in below 10 cents, then Guyman will pay Clearwater 10 cents or 5,500. And that will happen every month, just an additional step. Now, the simple way to look at that is regardless of what the market does, you're going to be locked in at your price. It's not going to be 7.49, it's not going to be 7.20, you know? We're safely in that 3.75 area at this moment. So it's a big difference, and this lock is secure, you got it. You can tell your families, your seniors, your businesses, you know, that we were able to do this for the authority of the city. It's done. Really, actually, that's simple.
So Mr. Turk, who?
Yes.
Who takes? So it was, for 2025, you predicted $1 million in savings roughly, right?
Based off that fixed price, the 3.78.
So who takes the loss?
Well, there's no gain, there's, there's no gain or loss each month. You're going to pay your fixed price, okay? But what, what, your savings comes from comparing it to your 2024 rates.
Okay.
And it's over a million dollars versus '23 as well. So that's where you do the math on the savings, by comparing it to '24, and by comparing it to '23.
So is this?
Your price is secure.
Is this a negotiating factor that Clearwater is offering with? Is this a negotiating factor that Clearwater is offering with gas companies?
When you say negotiating factor?
Or the expertise?
Yes, yeah, we have our own training group, we have our own risk group, supply group, we do all those type of things. So I think maybe the...
What's just hard for me to comprehend, a million dollars in savings and nobody's taking a loss anywhere, you know, in this day and age?
Yeah, well, the most basic way, I think, I mean, it is, this is a big number, I, like I said, it's kind of exciting to walk in here today. Now, part of that is your rates have been so high that there's a lot of opportunity to improve them, okay, that's part of it, and so that's part of why Clearwater is able to do this for you. But I get it, I mean, you know, it's kind of one of those things, it almost seems, you know, you know, we all kind of know that saying, but this is just math, you know, this is just math, and it's simple, and like I said, an additional step, something we've been doing for 25-plus years, we serve some of the largest municipals in the region, and been doing it a long time, and this is in our wheelhouse and our comfort zone, and honestly, just getting to know Mike and getting to know the staff here at City Hall, you know, kind of, it's kind of been, it's kind of been one of those things, like how, what can we do to help here? Obviously, we're a business, you know, we need to make a profit on our deals, but this is one of the, this is one of the more exciting potential opportunities that I've been part of myself, myself, and doing a lot. Any other questions?
I just have one, so what length of time do we lock that rate in once we sign?
So that, so this price right now that we're looking at is through the 2025 year, calendar year, okay? The '26 forward years, well, we'll also be able to optimize those too. Right now, and we do need to secure that, to secure that supply, but our folks right now think it's a bit premature based on all kinds of different information to do that, so we want to be a little more selective of when we go ahead and put that into play. But we do need to secure that supply.
So, so in other words, we're basically on a year-by-year basis?
Well, we're doing a, basically, we're doing, on the fixed price part.
Yes, sir.
Okay, but we're securing the deal for multiple years, just to put it all together, good question.
Is there any way that we can negotiate a cap, that it won't go above a certain price?
That's what you're doing, that's what you have.
Right.
Yeah, right now, you know, like I said, when I walked in here, it was 3.78, when I walk out, it might be 3.80 or it might be, you know, but yeah, there's, it's not, that's what you're getting, that's the concept of the fixed price, is you're protecting your rate payers, you know, because natural gas prices can be $100 a year, you know, I mean, it's very volatile, especially in the winter, and you don't want, you don't want your rate payers to have that kind of exposure. So the concept of the fixed price is the risk management part for your rate payers, for your families, and so you have a hard number in front of you tonight, and that's the gap. That's it. The only variable here is what it does in the time between you all make a decision on whether or the other, and, from right now, everything else is set.
I think what I'm more curious about is if we ended up switching with you, if there was a way that we could negotiate an agreement in which we would never pay above what we've been paying after the 2025, this is up?
Yeah, so that, the simplification of that.
Right, okay.
Because those are unknowns, back with a lot of different, you know...
Well, I mean, I gotta try, I gotta...
Absolutely, absolutely, no.
So you guys are based out of Oklahoma City, correct?
Correct.
And Constellation's been based out of Georgia, their home base?
Baltimore, Maryland.
Maryland, oh, interesting, yeah.
I might, this might be a good time to, how did he get here, okay? This is probably what you need to do.
Car?
As you, yeah. Electric car.
What an electric vehicle. No electric car out there.
I've tried, Jason, we bumped into each other somewhere down the road there for about a year ago, and we got to talking, and I have tried to reach out to Constellation, they're real timely in sending the invoices, they're not real timely, coming by, sitting down, visiting with you, planning out your year, here it is, see you later. Not heard anything from Constellation in about 10, 11 months now, and we've reached out, because I planned for the next year, I just couldn't do it, and visiting with Jason with Clearwater, we started these conversations almost a year ago, and I just, as your interim city manager, this is a good thing, this is for good for these people sitting out here, because gas is going to get high, or it is high right now, but this is something we can deliver and get the gas prices down a little bit and be secure for 2025, yeah. But we just wouldn't get the customer service from Constellation, was not getting it.
How long have we been in contract?
Well, that's a good story, a question, I think when I left here in 2007, we was with One Oak.
Right.
I think Constellation bought out One Oak or something like that, so we've been with them quite a while, we're one of the small people in their organizations.
And you're not small, by the way, this is a very large municipal system.
And I think we're the second largest in the state of Oklahoma for a municipal system.
This, you need attention, you deserve attention, you just do, you got a lot going on, this is a big, this is a big ticket item, and, you know, Mike tells me to hop in the truck and head over here, that's what I do, and I do that for all our clients, but yeah, I mean, that's, I don't ever talk negatively about anyone else, but I know what we do, I know what I do, and that's how we partner. We look for partners that want, take it seriously, and want to give the best deal, and all those kind of things, because quite frankly, some of them don't, they're just kind of like, ah, whatever. We look for people that are really serious about it, because we're serious about it.
And I was concerned about Constellation's, and I couldn't talk to anybody, so I found Clearwater, I used him as a sounding board for six to eight months there, trying to figure out a plan to better get more affordable with gas coming into here, and I used Clearwater for about six, seven, eight months there, just as a sounding board, and instead, I couldn't reach out to Constellation, no return on it, so.
We actually have been able to help with a few process improvements for the staff here.
Yeah.
Been able to do some things just because we have enough expertise, so, you know, good people here, and, you know, we recognize that, we see the need, so.
Local is definitely a plus.
Oh, definitely. Any other questions, discussion?
I have one, so like, just to lay it out, because I have no knowledge on gas, so you have a pipeline coming from Constellation, and now we're going to have one from West Texas Gas, like, can you?
Good question, not exactly, so the pipeline of the gas is going to come in from this Colorado Interstate Gas Pipe, otherwise referred to as CIG, for any, whatever, and that goes into the West Texas Pipe, which is your transport contract, all those things stay the same, none of the basic framework is different, you're just getting, you're getting your price of gas in the gas '26 on Clearwater, so it's just, that's it, everything else stays in place, there's no additional charges, your rates don't change with West Texas, it's all the same, it keeps coming in the same way.
We're switching.
It's kind of switching horses.
We're switching liaisons.
Yeah, if that's what you're saying.
It's a good analogy, yeah.
Yeah, it is good.
And essentially, we just realized now that we've been price gouged for a while.
Correct. Does Clearwater have contracts with other municipalities?
Oh, yes, yeah, we are...
Like any in the area, right?
Well, in Oklahoma, we have, you mentioned being the second, third largest, we have the largest, not the northeast one, we're pretty much everywhere. This is, you know, I'm a small-town Oklahoma guy, pouring bread and all that kind of stuff, so I enjoy getting out in communities just myself personally, and interacting with people, and being a part of what's going on, I enjoy it. Before I got, before I did this, started 20 years ago, I was a teacher and a coach, and I just liked being involved if I can be, and this is what I enjoy, so this is our wheelhouse for sure.
You can go ahead and say who you played basketball for.
I don't know, no, that, that...
Oh, I dare you, I dare you.
Oh, I got to play mostly practice and play just a little bit at Oklahoma State for Eddie Sutton and Bill Self and all those guys, a long time ago, a long time ago.
Big fan of Bill Self, because I'm a KU fan, so.
Yeah, 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 he's quite a guy, he's done a great job.
Any other questions, discussion?
Wish we could vote on it now?
All right, well, thank you all very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks for coming out.
Okay, Jit item number six is discussion and possible action to award bid for the Guyman Highway 64 ODOT Water Relocation Project and to execute an agreement between the successful bidder and the City of Guyman, the GUA. Good evening, how's the engineer tonight?
What are you going to give us this evening?
All right, just for the record, I'm Ryan McDonald, Park Hill Engineering.
Nice to meet you.
I'm not going to cost you money tonight, but we opened bids, if you remember back in September, we opened bids for the waterline relocation along 12th Street, Highway 64 for the ODOT project, we did not receive any bids, we re-advertised, we opened bids last week on Thursday, and we received four bids for that project, so there's a bid tabulation there, the important thing to note is that the apparent low bidder was Gates Utilities LLC out of Dumas, Texas, their bid came in at about $481,000, which fit within our budget that we proposed to ODOT, and so there's not an issue of funding for this project, it is reimbursed by ODOT, so it doesn't cost anything out of the city, but you guys own the utility, so it's your responsibility to move it, and you'll get reimbursed on that. We reviewed all the bids, everything came out accurate as it was during the bid opening, and so we prepared a recommendation letter and then the notice of award to award it to Gates Utilities to start the relocation of this project. Gates Utilities has done work for the City of Guyman before, they did another ODOT relocation for us on the south side of town on that new hoop that they're putting up, and then most recently, they also were the general contractor on the new ground storage tank at their air pump station on the northeast side. So I, personally, I've worked with Gates for many years, along with the city, and I do recommend award this project.
A lot of that's mobilization for those higher ones, seems like. Yeah, and charging more for parts, if you see.
Any questions, discussion?
I make a motion to reward the bid to Guyman Highway 64 ODOT Water Relocation Project and to execute agreement between the successful bidder and the City of Guyman, GUA.
Mayor, can I interrupt right quick, to execute the agreement, am I correct? We don't have that in place yet, just make, can we just make the motion to accept the bid? Is that acceptable, Mr. Petty?
Correct.
Okay. Be on the next two items.
Okay, yeah, I make a motion to accept the bid, and item number six.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Setzer?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Jit item number seven is discussion and possible action to award bid for the Guyman North Park School Edition Waterline Relocation Project and to execute agreement between the successful bidder and the City of Guyman, the GUA.
Similarly to what I just explained, we did couple this bid opening with the other project for the school water line there at the North Park School, we held a bid opening on the same day at the same time, we did receive more bids for this project, it is a lot more appetizing of a project, on the deal of all the pavement, road board, traffic control, we received six bids, one of them was incomplete, so we did not accept it, we read it aloud, but we did have five valid bids based on our evaluation. The low bidder, once again, was Gates Utilities LLC out of Dumas, Texas, they were the low bidder of all the five valid bids, and they were also 10% under our budget or our cost estimate, so I don't see any issues with the funding, there was no surprises with the bid open, so similarly, we make a recommendation to award it to Gates Utilities and issue a notice of award to get started on that.
Any questions, discussion, motion?
Is this an execute?
No, it's, yeah, just like the other one.
I make a motion to award the bid to Gates Utilities Inc. for the Guyman North Park School Edition Waterline Relocation Project and for that successful bidder in the City of Guyman.
Second. Have a motion and a second.
Setzer?
Aye.
Sanchez?
Aye.
Alvedres?
Aye.
Idson?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
We've got five ayes.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan. It was good to see this many bids, I mean, I hadn't seen this many bids turned in on a project in a very long time, so, and see the bids come in below engineers' estimates, so that kind of tells us the old world's maybe settling down a little bit, and everybody's getting back to practical expenditures and stuff like that. The superintendent's smiling. Was she, yeah, she was really smiling when I called her the other day.
We'll make it work.
All right, we have no new business, reports from city manager and council members. Anybody have any reports, anything they'd like to say? He didn't wear your costume tonight.
No costume.
Gosh, no.
Same, that was not.
I'll go ahead, there's a couple of things going to happen this week, we've been notified by Surt Canyon Landfill, that's where we export all of our solid waste, they're having a meeting tomorrow, I think myself, Tracy, and Kelly are going up to it, the state of Kansas has regulated or start planning to regulate what they can take, what they cannot take, we're anxious to go up there and listen to them, and there's a lot of changes coming down the pipe, so we'll know more about it about this time tomorrow evening, so it's going to be pretty interesting. The rest of it, in your reports there, with your building reports, and Chad's out there if he's got anything to say, I mean, we've got a lot of new stuff coming in, Domino's, I think, just opened up, you gave your certificate of occupancy on those people, and they're making pizzas and slinging them around town, and...
I heard they've been very good, indeed.
Yeah, it's, I heard it's pretty good pizza, too, so, a lot of good things on the horizon, a few, I mean, we have some building permits issued that, I'm not going to, am I, the one up north of the bank, or they still?
They haven't submitted anything.
They had submitted anything?
Next week they'll submit.
Okay, well, when that comes forward, I'll send you out an email, but it's a pretty name-brand coffee shop going to be coming to town, anyway, so take it for what that is. The budget process itself, we're in the revenue stages of that, we finally got this last month revenue, Rhonda and I will probably group up the rest of this week, looks like the revenue from last year's, just from sales tax, use tax, it's going to be pretty close to being the same, use tax fell off just a little bit, but there again, I think the world's kind of leveled out a little bit, I think everybody's kind of getting back to where they're conserving a little bit, still maybe driving someplace... a little bit, still maybe driving someplace, spending some money, but overall, it looks good. There's probably going to be some excess, not excess in the budget, there's going to be a little bit more money because of the rate analysis or the rate increase that was enacted last month, but there's going to be some new exciting things coming, be proposed to you next December the tenth, should be a fairly decent meeting. You'll have probably a proposed budget in your hands probably within the next three weeks, say four weeks, four weeks? Yeah, three weeks in, so now, four weeks. But I look for a good twenty twenty-five, closing out twenty twenty-four, it's been a good year, we got a lot done, and it's, it came and gone, wow, fast. Your financials, I've got the summary sheets there, just kind of touched just a little bit of the revenue and expenses just for October. I'm kind of the bottom-line guy, life go down, revenue was at thirty million, we had expenditures of twenty-nine million. All of our people are staying within their budget. The total from January till October, excuse me, that was January to October, thirty million and twenty-nine, we're staying within the budget. This, this last month, we had revenue of three million, expenditures of one point seven, so staff and directors have been watching what they spend. We've not had any surprises or anything like that, so we're comfortable, we're real comfortable. With that, that's all I got. Oh, we got a water conference coming up, the, the governor's water is coming up a week from today, so I think a couple of us will be down there at that, so.
Anybody else, anything?
I think we need to get prepared for the snow, since it's getting close.
Well, if, in the consent agenda, I think you just, you signed a, for salt and, or I guess you call it salt and sand, so we're getting ready, we're getting ready. Do you know something I don't?
They got quite a few snows.
Yeah, they are predicting a substantial wet winter.
So I was just thinking about emergency roads and posting it to make sure the public's aware of what's going on whenever snow hits.
Emergency snow routes are designated, we'll, we'll start posting those probably soon.
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
Stuck in there.
Well, maybe it'll be, uh.
Wow.
Getting close, getting close. Sergio, anything?
I don't have anything, Mayor.
Jason?
That was it.
Well, I wore my OPSU shirt tonight, this weekend's their chili cook-off, and I think it's the last, last football game of the season. Also, it's the last one for grandson, grandson number two, so kind of have mixed emotions about that. But if you get a chance, I think it's, I think it's been a buyout night for a day for the games, don't cost you to get in, I don't think it costs anything to eat chili, you're just on, on the hook for your own beverages. So, and but what's, you know, as I've, we've said for years and years, what's good for Panhandle State's good for Guyman, Oklahoma, and what's good for Guyman's good for Panhandle State. So should be a beautiful day, no snow, Jason, that's, that's good, so. With that?
I got, speaking of chili, staff has a chili cup of golf, and you're more than welcome to attend November twenty-second, I believe? Is it the twenty-second? Twenty-second, twenty-first. Sometime in November, we will send out an invitation, and it's.
And one other reminder, Main Street brought it up, they called me the other day about, wanted me to come out and plug the lights in, and I want Sergio to plug them in in case he gets elected, so. Anyway, I want to, I want, I want to extend, I want, I want to extend an invitation to the entire council to come out that night and, and help light up the festival of lights on Sunday evening, the December first, and so, and we'll, and we can watch, maybe we put some lights around here and see if you light up. You can wear your, you can wear your costume that night, and, yeah. Anybody have anything else? If not, stand adjourned, thank you all for coming tonight.
Don't be joke makers.
Well, I have plenty of material, man. Not everybody got to witness that attire you have.